Coming up.
Good evening, and welcome to the Murfreesboro City Board of Education Special Call Board Meeting. This is our policy work session. Good evening to all the board members. Good evening, Dr. Gilbert.
Good evening.
And to all that are in attendance. We'll start out with our communications. Dr. Gilbert?
Thank you. At this time, I'd like for Joe Marlin and also Siobhan Davis-Lewis to come to the podium, please. We need to see you two folks, and I need to let them know how important you two are. Joe will go with ladies first. This is Siobhan Davis-Lewis. You may remember her because she was the Assistant Principal at Mitchell-Nelson, had also taught at Discovery, did some amazing work there. We lost her to Memphis, but we're awfully glad to have her back. She's actually going to be working very closely with our principals and with our instruction team. She'll be working with data, data analysis, and turning that data into effective instruction. Those of you who knew her when she was at Discovery are very aware that she did this at Discovery. She absolutely turned her classroom around based on data. So, Siobhan, welcome, and I'm going to let you say a couple of words.
Thank you. It feels good to be home where I belong. Memphis was a great experience, but there's no place like Murfreesboro City Schools. And again, thank you for the opportunity. Excited.
Thank you, Siobhan.
Dr. Gilbert?
Yes.
We love Ms. Davis-Lewis. She is fabulous. My daughter had the pleasure of being one of those numbers and students in her class, and she did a wonderful job with the smaller scale, and we are very fortunate to have you doing this for all of the schools and all the students in our district. So, very excited that you're here.
Thank you. Very excited to be here.
Thank you.
I have to echo that because my daughter also got to enjoy and grow from her experience. The very first year Discovery was open.
Glad.
Thank you, too. Nothing better than testimonial appearance. This is Mr. Joe Marlin. Mr. Joe Marlin comes to us from Rutherford County. He has tremendous experience in special education. I'm excited particularly about Mr. Marlin because he has already begun to work with our instruction team. Our whole goal is to not look at children, whether they're special ed or whether they're regular ed, but just to look at children. So, I can't tell you the respect that Joe brings to this position and the collaboration that he already has built with principals. So, Joe, it's yours.
Thanks. I'm awfully glad to be here. I moved to this county 19 years ago and have been with Rutherford County, but I'm really excited because over the years, I've realized what a great city we live in. Murfreesboro is a wonderful place to live, and we have an exceptional school district, and I appreciate that, and I'm excited about being here. I started in 1976 as a special education teacher, so I've got a few years underneath under my belt, but I can't say that I've ever been any more excited than I am right now because of the, I think, what the future holds for us in special education and generally in education altogether. So, thank you. Thanks for the opportunity.
Welcome, Mr. Marlin.
Thank you.
Mr. Campbell?
Well, I'll speak on Mr. Marlin's behalf because I can't tell you that my child was in your class or anything like that, and I may have been in your office a few times when you were at Central Magnet. But the time, Joe, that I had the opportunity to work with you with special education when I was at Walts Hill was a pleasure, and I always admired the way you handled things and very much of a spade, spade person, and when I was wrong, you told me so.
And vice versa.
I won't go say that, Joe. Welcome aboard. We're glad to have you.
Thanks. Glad to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome to both of you. Dr. Gilbert, the naming of the new school, and then I want Mrs. Baker to kind of address the policy before we get started.
You've got Board Policy 47 that the Board adopted in May sets forth the procedure for naming of the school. The Board, under this policy, chose to set up a committee that would submit at least two and no more than four names to the Board for consideration, and the Board is to review those names and make a final selection of the name and present that name to the City Council for their information. Some of the guidelines for naming of the school is that the school's not to be named for living persons except for those who have rendered exemplary service to public education in Murfreesboro as recognized and approved by a vote of the Board. And two schools in the system should not be given the same name, and care should be taken to avoid similar names. Schools may be named for areas or community in which the school is located, such as the street on which the school is located, or a street bordering the school's side, or the name of the community. And it may also be named after presidents, governors, or recognized national, state, and local leaders who have made an outstanding contribution in the field of education. And the committee will submit its recommendation about the name of the school with supporting reasons to the Board.
Thank you. Dr. Gilbert, we'll go from there, and then I'm pretty sure there, if you'll give the overview and then give the names, and I'm pretty sure there'll be some discussion.
As delineated by the policy, there was a committee appointed, and I'd like, if those committee members are present, I'd like for them to stand because they did due diligence with this. They had the list of names and also the supporting documentation for why. So, at this time, I'm going to read off the names, and we do have a couple of those members with us tonight. But the members of the committee were Nancy Lauke, who is a community member, Ron Washington, who is your City Council Representative, Carissa Brooks, who was the staff member, Marcela Tapia, and Mary Wade was the board member. But we also have two of the other members with us, and these are our community volunteers. Joni Beckwith, who is here. Joni, if you would stand, please. Joni's a tremendous volunteer. She has worked with the school district at Franklin Heights. And also, Mr. Russell Smith, who is another community member, and he also happens to be with Parks and Rec. So, we certainly appreciate your service to the committee. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Ms. Wade? It was a privilege to sit in on this particular committee. It's very important to us in naming our new school. It was not an easy chore, as the committee members are here, they can tell you. It was not easy, but we did have ballot votes. We had to have a second vote because we had a tie on one, but this is what the names that are being submitted to the Board tonight, and I know there's going to be some questions. You're welcome to ask questions, but we're going to try to stay as close as we can to the policy. The first name on here, and they're not in any particular order, but it's Overall Creek Elementary and West Side Elementary. Those were the two names submitted from the Board. Ms. Smith?
Thank you, my friends, for serving on the committee. I appreciate everything y'all do for the community. Thank you very much. I would like to say that, for those that are here, this is the first time I've seen these names. And I think I would really like to see it named for a person. I'm not, I mean, we have so many fabulous people that are from Murfreesboro that have done so much for education in Murfreesboro, and I'm looking at the policy. I'm not sure that it really says that we have to accept the names by the committee. So, if Ms. Baker would like to explain why that is, that would be great. I just, the children, it's great to have role models. If you go to school where there was a fabulous person who was dedicated, dedicated their life to the community spirit, I think that says a lot to the children, and it gives them a goal, and they want to do good, and they want to have a school name for them. That's just, that's just where I am with naming the school.
Well, the policy clearly showed that the Board chose to set up a committee to review names that were submitted by the community, and the committee is to submit the proposed names to the Board for review. This is, the policy the Board adopted, if the Board does not like either name, of course, you could always choose to ask the committee to continue the search, but if the Board did not want to review the names submitted by the committee, that, I mean, that's the whole purpose of the committee, was to filter the names that were originally submitted and bring those to the Board for review.
My argument is, and I know y'all won't believe this, but I was on, I was on the naming committee for Central Magnet, and that was not the name that was sent in by the committee. The school, the Rutherford County School Board, which may have had a, obviously had a different policy, they overruled that because they made that decision. It was some tweaking, but that's just what happened there. So, that's what I would say, advocate that just because something's proposed here doesn't mean that that is what has to be accepted.
Thank you. Ms. Phillips?
This is a toughie because people have put in due diligence, work, hard thinking, and deliberation on this. On the other hand, I see Ms. Smith's point, and I think about Scales and the tremendous role models that they are, the legacy that they give our school that's named for the Scale family and that all that they contributed here in Murfreesboro. So, I see both sides. Um, you know, I, is there a way to find a compromise? Is there a way that we could submit at the maximum two more, two names as opposed to, and ask the committee to revisit and look at it and see how they feel with that name compared to what they've submitted? Is there a compromise here? Could we do that, Ms. Baker?
It's, the Board's discretion, of course. Someone would need to make a motion to either accept or to accept one of the two names submitted, or it's up to the Board to decide what motion they want to propose. You do have two names before you. I know the policy did indicate that there should be some, the committee would provide some of the reasoning behind the selection of the two names. Maybe one of the committee members could provide some of that information to the Board to assist in making a decision.
I can go with one because, I can't, the meeting's been a while ago, and I can't remember all of it, but I remember one. And let me do say, there were over 40 names submitted, living, dead, they were submitted. And when you submitted it, you had to give us reasons for the committee to decide on that person. There were a lot of good folks whose names were submitted, and it was really, really hard. But when you put words in like "render exemplary," there may be 10 people, you can't name it straight out 10 names across the board for a school. So, we sat down, we deliberated a while, and when we got to talking about it, we came to Overall Creek Elementary was one of the names. The creek that runs behind the school is Overall Creek. That kind of made it pretty simple because that's the land it was sitting on, and the creek was behind it. West Side, I'd always heard the school called West to begin with. I thought that was the name before they said we were going to have a policy and decide on the name. I'd always heard it because it's on the west side of town. It is very, very hard to name a school. I worked on the last two. It was hard. We, you know, everybody's not happy when you get ready to name a school, and I really respect the fact that Ms. Smith was on the Central Magnet naming, and it was not. I don't know too much about how it was already Central, it probably was part of the scrap over there, it was already Central High. I guess they wanted to keep it either Central, something with Central's name in it. It's, I won't say it's kind of tough because the committee, when you go and you're not wanting, well, Ms. Smith has stated that she would like to really, I guess, vote this down or come back with two names. It could still come back with the same two from that same committee that we have right here. It just was tough. We took all the names into consideration, and I think it maybe said that this is the first, yes, this is the first time the Board has seen the names, and that's the way we, the Board wanted it, that meant. If we had turned the names loose after we met and chose, we would have had really a tough time bringing these names in. But we waited till our meeting where everybody could hear it at the same time, being presented, and these were just the two names that they thought were very fitting for the location of the new school. Ms. Phillips?
If you're done, I'll wait for you to go.
Yes, no, I'm through.
I think that's, that's a wonderful explanation. I can't imagine being, having 40 names in front of you and trying to choose out of those 40. And just, just that alone would make you want to, you know, push it out so that nobody is, feels left out. Can, I need to understand what we are and aren't able to do. Ms. Baker, let me ask a question. Is there a way to add one name to this list and then vote on one of these three names? Or would it be better to add a name and send it, if that's what Ms. Smith wanted, and then send it back to the committee?
Well, the policy does not really address that. It indicates that the committee would submit names to the Board for consideration, and then the Board would determine whether they make the final selection of one of the names submitted. So, you've got two names before you tonight. The Board needs to determine if they want to accept one of those two names or do move in another direction. I think that's where you're at. You've got two names that the committee that you had implemented, has submitted to the Board for review.
Dr. Brown and Mr. Barrett, if they have questions or comments?
As has been stated, we had over 40 names suggested for the school. If you look at the schools that are already named, they're about 50/50 being named for areas of the community or names, and that doesn't follow a specific trend. Some of the named schools or individuals are very old schools and have newer schools that are named for regions after that. So, I think we asked a committee to do a job. They did a very difficult job and came back with what I consider to be two good recommendations. I think that they deliberated, and I feel comfortable voting on the two names that have been submitted.
Mr. Barrett?
I want to echo what Dr. Brown said. I appreciate the committee's hard work, and we do have two solid names here. To me, the West Side Elementary seems a little general to me. The way Murfreesboro is growing, that West Side might not be West Side much longer. You know, we're growing pretty fast. Overall Creek really speaks to me, and I think that'd be a really good name for the school, so.
Okay. Mr. Campbell?
We decided when we adopted the policy, the direction we wanted to go. And I don't have a problem with asking the committee to look at other, other names. However, I think when we do that, how are we going to determine what the committee's going to look at? How are we going to determine what, how many names we're going to allow them to look at? I don't think that we, as a Board, need to say, we're going to submit one name we want them to look at. I think if we don't accept one of these two, then I think we're opening, opening up all to start the whole process all over again because you can't tell somebody, well, you can't give me that name because I've already got a name over here. So, I think you're, as the old saying goes, you're opening up Pandora's box all over again when you, when you put it back out there. I can go with one of these two names. One of these I've heard comments about, that's what some folks want, but I haven't heard from a committee member, but I, you know, I just, I don't have a problem with letting the, letting the committee look again, but when you do that, we've just got to understand they've got, they're going to have to look at maybe 40 more different names because I don't think we can tell one person, they can't submit a name, but we're going to let somebody else submit one.
Mrs. Rainier?
Well, I too appreciate the hard work of the committee because I know that this was not an easy task. I was a little surprised when I looked at the names because I thought they're so generic, and I know from other friends and other people in the community that a lot of names of very distinguished members of our community were submitted. I can't say, yes, I'd rather do that, or no, I'd rather do that, but the policy does say that we could have two names but not more than four names brought to the Board. Is it possible, Ms. Baker, could we, and it may not be, could we poll the Board now and say, are you ready to make a decision? Or would you like, I guess, my thought would be, if it went back to the committee, they would take their original list of names and see if they could come up with two more and then bring us back four at the next meeting. But I, and maybe, maybe we're ready to vote now. I don't know. It's hard to, this just seems very generic to me, but it could end up generic anyway, so.
I think you're at a point where someone on the Board would need to make a motion as to which direction they feel it would be best to go.
Well, I just don't think that we, we can limit the number of names that the committee's going to look at again, whether, they've already looked at the 40, and if these were the two that they chose from that 40, I don't see any reason that they need to go back and look at the other 38 again.
Mr. Barrett?
I'm over on.
Abrams?
Well, I was going to make a motion on the name of the school, but if we're still discussing, then we can.
It's yours discussion or?
Mine's discussion.
Okay.
I'm not saying that this is what we should do or this is what I would support. I'm just curious as to whether this could be, if a motion was made that we asked them to include two, the names of two people from those names already submitted and add them to this list to be voted on. Not, not, I mean, just to leave the original two and add two names of two local, you know, people. Could that be done?
Before I call on Mrs. Rainier.
That's a question.
That's the tough one you'll have to do. With Dr. Gilbert and Mrs. Baker's permission, let me swing over to Dr. Gilbert for just a second, Mrs. Rainier. We've talked about this. One of the committee members would like to make a statement. Ms. Baker, would that be permissible on this? And I want to make sure that I, if you'll walk to the podium, please, ma'am. If you'll tell, if you'll tell them your name, please.
I'm Joni Beckwith.
Thank you.
We really worked really hard, and the 40 names that were submitted, we also looked to how many times they were submitted. And people had the opportunity to submit any name that they wanted to. We had so many good names of so many people who have passed on and who are living, and I would tell you that it would be very difficult to bring it to two names because if you just think about it and you look around, the people that we have who have given so much to our education will have 40 more new names for you. So, when we looked at these two names, and I will tell you, Overall Creek meant a lot to me because they're going to try to focus on the creek there for studies. That's one of the things we talked about. So, that would be, and I'm sorry I have laryngitis, but that was one of the reasons. But I tell you, it was, it was very, very hard to come to one name, two names, three names because we had so many people. I don't mind going back if that's what we need to do, Dr. Gilbert, to find another name for you, but you're good, we just had so many, and I want you to know that we did really take it to heart, and we really wanted to do the right thing for the city. So, I want you to know it was very hard for us, but we just, we don't have just two names. We had so many names, and we, and like I said, we did take into consideration that how many times they were actually submitted. So, I want you to feel comfortable with that. Okay? Thank you.
We'll have Mrs. Rainier and then Mr. Barrett.
My question or comment would be if, if this went back to the committee and they came up with, and I would certainly not ask you to ask for more names. I would just say, go with the original ones that you had, but regardless, whether, what if they came back with additional names now? And we didn't like those either, and we said, go back again.
No.
So, I know that we need to cut it off at some point in time, and of course, that's the discretion of the Board, the wishes of the Board. I just, I think we're in a silly little catch-20 thing here.
Okay. Mr. Barrett?
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Overall Creek Elementary name.
I'll second that motion.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Let me go back. For Overall Creek Elementary to be the name of the new school. Ms. Ridley, call the roll.
Barrett?
Yes.
Dr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Rainier?
No.
Ms. Smith?
No.
Ms. Wade?
Yes. Thank you. Let me thank the committee again. Your new school that's on the west side of town, which may change as they've said it, will be Overall Creek Elementary. I want to thank the Board for their discussion. It was a hard task, and I want to thank the committee for their hard work and the time that they donated to come, and we did discuss everything that came in. So, I want to thank you all, but tonight, we have voted Overall Creek Elementary as the new elementary school. Mrs. Phillips?
I just also want to thank my colleagues on the Board for bringing such great ideas because I think I certainly understand the idea of having a leadership name because it's worked so well with Scales and with Pittard, and so I certainly understand and appreciate that.
And I'd like to thank Ms. Wade for her leadership. I would say it's probably the most, one of the most objective committees I've ever, I've ever witnessed. It was interesting, there was a brief overview of the school as far as what it would look like, and then they very seriously took the list, went through it individually, and voted, and I thought it was handled very well, so thank you very much for the way that you handle that committee.
Well, we'll go on further to approval of technology proposal. Are there any questions or comments or anyone that, oh, Dr. Gilbert has a presentation. I don't know. Sorry.
I'm leaving.
Now, I wanted to pull up, I wanted to pull up the PowerPoint because I'll be operating off that. You should have in your packet or on your desk, you should have a copy of the PowerPoint. You should have a document that says the Need for Technology Common Core Student Learning Standards. You also have the proposal as far as the monetary proposal and also how many devices we're talking about, and then you should have another that is classroom configuration and also the software because I wanted to make sure that the Board has all the information that they need for endorsing this proposal or asking us to go back and to take a look at it. But I do want to operate off the PowerPoint, so, John, if you could pull that up. Thank you. When, when we're talking about technology, I think that we have to look at the why first, and we need to understand if we're going to, to purchase materials for children and for teachers, then there has to be a very good reason why. When you think about what's happened with the school setting and you think about what has happened with education, we have progressed, and we have, have done a lot in the last 50 years. But when you think about what's happened with the rest of the world, if I were to ask you what's happened with communication, you would talk to me about the laptops you have in front of you, you would talk to me about email, you would talk to me about being able to call anywhere in the world. You would probably discuss your, your smartphones that you have that we all kind of live by. If we talked about transportation and the way transportation has changed in the last 50 years, you would be able to talk about how you can go anywhere in the world if you want to. We could even go in outer space. But when we look at how education has changed, yes, we have changed, but unfortunately, the rest of the world has changed a lot faster. And so, what I'm asking tonight is for you to be able to put into the hands of children and teachers what we need to accelerate their learning. That's the why. We, because we realize in Tennessee, there is a skills gap with what we are teaching our students. The state has proposed the Common Core standards and the assessment that will accompany them, which is the PARC assessment. When we look at those Common Core standards, we're looking at taking learning deeper and embedded within those Common Core standards, and you have a detailed list of some of them on your desk. But when you look at reading language arts, for example, you see phrases like accessing content presented in diverse media. You see analyzing visual and multimedia elements of that content. So, what that means is our children will be looking at a diverse media, will be looking at passages or gaining knowledge from diverse media. When we look at writing... When we look at writing, you will find words like using technology, including the internet, to produce and publish writing, and to interact and collaborate with others. Well, it's a little difficult if you do not have computers, if you don't have digital devices at the fingertips of our children and our teachers, for them to be able to meet those standards. Now, we know that we have the PARC assessment that's coming up next year, we know that we'll take our writing assessment online in February, but we need to prepare for those. So I want you to think of this not just as preparation for the test, because we know how we feel about testing in Murfreesboro City, we understand that children are more than numbers, but I need you to look at it as preparing our children for the real world, if you think about that skills gap and what our children will need. So we began research actually about two and a half years ago. We were looking at our, our devices, we knew that our computers were getting older, the youngest of our computers was purchased, I think, in 2007, so we knew we needed to move on it. But about that time is also when the state decided that they would move to Common Core. So we needed to wait to see what devices we would need, what their capabilities would need to be, in order to prepare our children, to prepare our teachers for Common Core, and also the assessment. So we talked to the Department of Education, we talked to various school districts in Tennessee, and in various states around us, we talked to our vendors, and we began to look at what's really going to be best for our children, and there were four guiding principles. One, what will best prepare our children for the future? Two, what will satisfy the PARC assessment? Three, what will put as many devices as possible into the students' hands? And then four, what will be the best use of taxpayers' money? What we are asking is for us to move to a PC platform, and we looked at, among the, the devices, we looked at, we looked at Apple, because that's what we use, and that's what our teachers are comfortable with, and when you look at Apple and what it will do, and a PC and what it will do, though, I can't justify the million dollars difference that it would be in the cost. So if we're going to prepare our children for the future, and thinking about other reasons of the why, with the Dell, you have a four-year warranty that covers the damage, Apple warranty does not, so we would either have to replace the Apple machines at our own cost, or we would have to purchase insurance to take care of the accidental damage. On-site parts, if we go with the Dell, then we will not have to order most items, our, our folks in technology will be able to make the repairs at that time, and Dan Boshers is here tonight, and I may ask him to address that. Many of the problems can be remotely addressed, and then we're more likely to be able to replace them on a regular schedule, because they are much less expensive than we would have for the Apple. So what we are recommending is, in all grade levels, we have specific recommendations. For our pre-K, we're looking at five student iPads per class. For kindergarten and first grade, we're looking at two-to-one student iPads, which means for every two students, there would be an iPad. We feel that we, we can use the iPads there, we feel like at that age that we're getting the children used to the digital technology, they're getting used to dragging and dropping, they're beginning to, to use the devices for learning, there is not the necessity of having the keyboard as there would be, particularly in third grade up. Now, to prepare our children, though, for third grade, which is where they will begin testing, we are thinking that we really need to have those laptops in second grade. So that's the reason you have for grades two through six, the proposal of a laptop for each two students, and then you have the other categories there, the ELL, the special ed, the library, the speech, and then the teachers. The software that the teachers will have is there before you, the Microsoft Office Suite, Discovery Education, which is the testing, some of you will think, know that is ThinkLink, Skyward, which is our data management system, the Online Textbook Extended Learning Tools, and I'm going to ask Karen to address those in a few minutes. Also, our teacher websites, you will recognize that our schools have new websites this year, that is through Sharp School, and then the Microsoft SharePoint, which is what we use for our Intranet for document sharing, and also School Station, which is where our teachers sign up for PD. As far as the students, Lexia, which is a reading program, again, they would have access to the Extended Learning Tools that are provided by our adopted textbooks, Destiny, which is a library research tool that we are implementing this year, so that the students would have access to being able to look at the, the books that would be in the library, and, and decide what they want, but it's really a library research tool there. Microsoft Office, Type2Learn, which is a keyboarding software, Rosetta Stone, which is an ELL software that we'd, we'd use particularly in our, in our upper grades, and then Fast Math, which is an automaticity software, which would help our students as far as addition, subtraction, multiplication, division. And then we also are looking at purchasing apps for, for our iPads. The infrastructure will also be a big piece of this. The infrastructure will enable our network speed to increase ten times the current speed, and I think that's going to be very important as more devices are on the network, as we're trying to have students assess at the same time, I think that becomes important. The single sign-in, when teachers now, when they sign in with the new infrastructure, they will have access immediately to webmail and to other, other areas where normally they would have to have separate passwords, this will allow them an immediate sign-on. This will give us an improved system to manage the software, to support the network, and also a virus and spam filter, so, and all upgrades will be able to be managed when, when sign-on occurs. So we're looking at a total cost, when you look at our student machines, we're looking at $2,768,232 for our certified personnel, which would be all your teachers, your psychologists, and other folks that are certified, $560,625, for a total of $3,328,857. Our infrastructure cost is $1,689,992. That brings it to a total of what we would need currently, of $5,018,849.60. But we would also like to request that we prepare for the new school, so we have an additional amount there of $187,875, for a total of $5,206,724.60. Now, as far as the transition, because we are moving from an Apple platform to a PC platform, I really feel that it's important that we move as quickly as possible, and that our teachers are able to model for our students. However, I am well aware that our teachers will need transition time to transition from Apple to the Dell, and so I would like for them to be able to keep their Apple machines until the end of this year. We will be doing extensive professional development during the year. This will allow our teachers time to learn the new platform, and also to transfer any documents that they have on their old platform to the new platform. That's important, folks, because there are some documents there that they use for teaching, and I think it's critically important that our teachers are comfortable with the new machines. We can go ahead and put our students on them, our teachers will have the new laptops, too, so that they can learn them, but I just think it's important that we allow this year for those teachers to also have those Apple machines. And then upon approval, we will enter into a digital alliance with Microsoft, who will offer us support for transition. At this point, I'm going to ask that Mr. Boshers come forward, and also Ms. Hawkins, to answer, help me answer any questions you might have. Dan, I would like for you to talk a little bit about the infrastructure, though, and why it's so important for this.
Dr. Gilbert, before Mr. Boshers starts, I think there are some questions while you talk, Mr. Campbell, and then Mrs. Phillips, and Mrs., okay, just Ms. Phillips and Mr. Campbell.
We were talking about the, the laptops and whatever, when we say special ed for ELL for, we talk about per school, am I correct?
No, we're talking about in those classrooms. Karen, do you want to come?
Well, yeah, but it would be, per school is not going to be like for system-wide, we're talking about.
No, no, no.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
And library and so forth.
Right. So when you look at this, you're looking at a classroom.
Okay, all right.
Karen, come on up.
Will, will a student, if they have the capability at home, will they be able to log into any of these programs at home?
Yes, go ahead, Karen.
Yes, but all, all of the software that we purchased, or were purchasing this year that you approved in the spring in the budget, allow for student log-on at home. So for example, the Type2Learn, students could actually access that at home, they could go to the library, they could go to ESP possibly, and access these programs. So same thing with Lexia, the Fast Math, all of those are available both at school and at home.
Okay.
Having said that, I think it's important, though, for us to recognize that not all students may have devices at home. My understanding is these will be able to be logged on even with smart, smartphones, right?
On an iPad. The, I think the only one that would not be, would be the Type2Learn, because you're going to have to have the keyboard, and it requires a full computer to work. But the others, you could, on an iPad or smartphone, you could get to many of those applications.
The, the totals, the proposal and all that you have given us tonight in the packet is different from the one that we got, so this is the one that we're going with, am I correct?
That's right.
Okay. Mrs. Phillips, and then Mr. Barrett.
I ask y'all to bear with me, I have several comments and a few questions. First off, wow, what a huge undertaking this is, and I congratulate you and all the staff on working on, on this. I know that for a long time, it's been a, it's been something that I've talked about, and we know we've needed it, we know we had to think about how we were going to support it financially, we know that we are now being forced into this position by the demands of the state as far as their testing online and assessments online, so we have to make it available. Years ago, before I even came on the board, we wouldn't have a technology program if it hadn't been for Mr. Claude Vick, according to, I remember, I remember Mr. Pittard saying that he was so committed to making sure that Murfreesboro City Schools stayed current with what was needed for our, our kids, for our kids to advance into the future. Now it's time to take the next step. I think we're very fortunate, I know when the Discovery School opened, they opened with some opportunities for computer use and new ways for some of the children there, and I think that was awesome, but at the same time, I know that many on the board voiced that we were excited that we could offer that to the children, and then we wanted to be able to expand that program. I see that with the update of getting iPads and things like that, we are expanding into the future for our kids, and I'm really, really excited about that. Now, to my questions. First off, on, on software for students, when it says online textbook extended learning tools, who's going to download, get that all on the computer so the children can access it? Is it going to be the classroom teacher, is it going to be Mr. Boshers, is, is it going to, what, where's that coming from?
It's actually already available to our students and our technology coaches, Mickey Brooks and Trent Cheves, they are instrumental in getting all the students entered into that, all the usernames and passwords are available, so they really facilitate that for the teachers. And they do that every year, and they've already rolled, they're already ready, and our online, we have online textbooks for all of our textbooks, for math, reading, social studies, and science, they have a hard copy, and then they have an online version as well.
My next question, then, thank you very much, Ms. Hawkins. My next question is, with the best will in the world, with the new demands of Common Core, when are our teachers going to be able to teach the children? And I understand that our computer labs are closing down, is that correct?
We'll be moving the computer labs, what will happen is because you're going two-to-one, the teacher, or the EA, or whoever's been doing the computer labs, we will have these on carts, and so teachers will be able to pair together, and they would have a complete set of computers, so instead of the children going to the lab, then they will be able to have that instructional action in their classroom.
So is, are the EAs that we're teaching and working with the kids, are they going to be able, are they going to rotate through the classrooms?
It would be basically the same thing, except instead of the students going to them, they would be going to the students.
They'll be going to the students, so that is in the schedule for that, there's room for that in the schedule?
That's, that's, I sure hope so. Now, now.
I think in some places, it's out of the rotation.
Yeah, yeah, it is. And I think the, the key here is, when you're, when you're doing something like this, you're looking at transforming the way teaching happens. It has to be. And I think that with our technology staff that we have, and also now with even the central office staff outside of Mickey and Trent that have that technology background, I think what you're going to see is teachers learning, there may be after-school, there may be coming in for an entire day, but I think you'll see more embedded into those classrooms, that, that instruction, and those teachers getting used to the computers. And so with that, what I foresee happening is instead of, it's hard for me to find a paper and pencil when I need it. And I think that eventually, eventually our students will become so accustomed to doing their writing on the computers, they're going to have to, because that's the way the real world works. So I think you'll see some of that instruction, I think some of it you'll see with the, the Type2Learn, that would be a program there that the students can learn, but also I think more than anything else, you're going to see those children using it just for day-to-day writing, where they're replacing the paper and pencil with that computer.
I think my concern was, I know the kids will, they'll have it like that, and some of the teachers will, but some of the teachers, with all, you know, with all due respect, it's going to be harder for them to move into using, and having it embedded in all their programming, all their curriculum, so.
I'm sorry, I think that the numbers, the sheer numbers we have are going to make it easier for teachers to integrate, because it's really hard when you only have five computers in the classroom, to organize your classroom so that everyone can have access. Having this many laptops in a classroom, you could easily have half the class doing this, half the class doing that, and I think that the management of it will be a lot easier, and it'll be really an easier sell for us, for teachers to adopt the technology, simply for having the tools at their fingertips.
That's excellent point, that's an excellent point, and thank you. My last question is, let's talk about, I, I want to know, who's going to sign the check? Okay, where's the funding coming from?
What I would like is for the board to endorse this, for us to present to council.
Okay.
I think that this, this city has always supported the school district, I think they can be very proud of the school district and, and what is happening here, I think they understand that we are in many ways the economic pump of the entire community, and I think that they understand that if our children are going to learn and do the things that we do every day, then they need that technology, because I would dare say that there's not a person in this room, or probably not a person who's watching, that doesn't use that computer for a majority of the time of the day, and we have to have our children prepared for that.
And I'm assuming that you've already had dialogue with the city regarding?
I have, Chris Lilly has been extremely helpful to us, he is their IT person, and I have talked with Mr. Lyons, he is aware that we will, and also Mr. Crumley, they are very aware that we will be presenting this.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir, very much.
Mr. Barrett, and then Mrs. Smith, and then Mrs. Renier.
First, I want to appreciate the, you know, well-presented details here for this computer purchase, it's a big investment in our future. One thing that came up, I'm going to have several questions, but one thing that came up was, are there other devices that we looked at, like Google Chrome or anything like that, or are they not compatible, or, I'll let you address that, but.
We, we did look at those, in fact, we attended at least one presentation by the state at which a lot of devices were presented. I will tell you that this is probably a different proposal now than what I would have made two and a half years ago, because I'm, after looking at the Common Core standards and believing those standards, and after looking at what we think the assessment will look like, I really think the laptops are going to be needed. And I think that Dell is a good product, we have, we have done some research with some other products, and I think that we feel comfortable with this product. So I think that when you're looking at something this large, you want it to be able to let our students do whatever they need to do, and also our teachers, and I feel very, very much assured that our, our students will be prepared to do the research they're going to need to do, and that they will be able to, to take their assessments on this.
Another question that came up, what about bring your own device? I know other districts in the country do that, I don't know if we had thought about that, or maybe in the future we could think about that, but.
I think, I think that's something certainly that we can look at in the future, it's something that we've talked a little bit about already. I think that the responsibility of this board, and the responsibility that I have in presenting something to you, is to make sure that whatever is presented, that there is equity as much as possible across, across the board, but across, across the school district, and I think this will provide that. Now, I, I will say that if there are entities out there that would like to donate machines to us, I'm certainly not going to object to that, would want it on the same platform, just as surely as if they want to donate books to us, or something to augment curriculum, it would need to be along the same lines as our curriculum. But I, but I do feel comfortable, I think these machines will give us what we need, and will, will hold up for us for, for what we're going to need for our students. and will, will hold up for us for, for what we're going to need for our students.
Two more questions. I noticed in the budget for the new school, you know, we had infrastructures in carts and cases for the upper. Is that, I'm assuming, are they in totalled in the new school or are they lumped in with the upper part?
The infrastructure piece will cover everything. The new school, the infrastructure is usually included in the construction budget.
And the carts and cases too?
Correct.
Okay. Now, my last question is, we were talking about homework earlier, or online access. Is there going to be homework going home on this, or, you know, are they going to be doing that online?
Our, our approach to homework is that we need to be sure that whatever we assign to homework, that those students are going to have the tools. So while I could see this as reinforcement, I would be very hesitant to encourage teachers to assign homework that is going to require online unless we are sure that our students have the necessary devices at home to accommodate that.
Thank you.
And then Mr. Barrett. Ms. Smith.
This is amazing. I mean, I cannot imagine being Mr. Boschiers and doing all of this research behind all this and letting everyone know. I have tried to trip Dr. Gilbert up and I have failed in shooting off all my questions to her in the last few days.
Well, let me say this, I appreciate the board's questions, and you know that.
But, but her responses have been very thorough, and I appreciate it. What I wanted you to explain is, I was impressed that, in several ways, but if you could tell how you've reached out to other communities about, about where they come from, and then if you could tell why you chose the laptops versus tablets.
Okay.
And then, and then I have another question afterwards.
Oh, good, thank you. My brain will only allow me to absorb two questions at a time. Old age is bad. We began looking about two and a half years ago, and we began looking in-state and talking to school districts in-state. Fortunately, we have, school districts, we have tremendous relationships with school districts across the state. But we also looked at a place called Mooresville, North Carolina. And Mooresville really is known as the premier district for one-to-one. It so happens that the superintendent in Mooresville was the first superintendent here in Murfreesboro at Northfield, so I knew him. And so I called him and started talking to him at that time. He was involved with one-to-one laptops, and so I talked to him about what they were using and what his advice would be. Also, we looked at school districts in Georgia, we looked in Alabama, obviously, we looked around here, and talked to Rutherford County, talked to Williamson County, talked to a lot of other counties. But we, we attended any workshop that we could, and I'm going to let Karen address what the tech folks did. And of course, Dan was involved too with, with doing some research. And we also got expertise from Chris Lilly because he has a great amount of knowledge too. So that's really the process that we used. It's been an ongoing process. It's been a process of trying to second-guess the state and asking them to go ahead and make a decision when we needed it at budget time, and understanding that they did not want to do that because the park process is really a process that involves a lot of states making decisions. As far as the laptops, I think that when we look at what we're going to expect our students to do, as far as keyboarding, being able to compare, being able to type, if you look through those Common Core standards and the kinds of things they're going to have to do, if we went to an iPad all the way, I'm not sure that we could do that. I know we would have to have keyboards with them. So it really came down to the decision, when we looked at the Common Core, we realized that we need to have something that would be sturdy enough and would have the power to do what our children are going to need to do. What, what I've heard teachers say to me is, is that this would really give them a way to diversify their classroom. If we are going to actually look at individual children and what individual children need by having this number, if you just think about a classroom, even if you don't borrow from the other teacher's classroom, to be able to put two children on every computer and the kind of research and learning that can happen there, I think is very powerful. It can be as simple as far as the reasoning. I know in my mind, I was thinking frankly of screen size and, and what students would be able to do as far as comparing two texts, which is what they're going to have to do, and talk about the strength of one text over another text. And I'm going to stop there and let Karen talk a little bit too from the, the instruction side as far as the wireless laptops.
I want to mention that we did look at other tablets. We looked at the Dell tablet. We sampled the Google Chrome. We were looking for the device that would give us the most access to software. And when you look at the iPad technology, it's been here for longer than the current tablets. And while they may catch up down the road, right now, we have lots of resources on that iPad technology. With the tablets at the kindergarten and first grade, you know, we want students at that age to be moving things and shifting things and doing, you know, we don't want them sitting there typing all day. We want them to really have a manipulative device. And also, the tablets are much more a consumer device. So you're reading off the tablet, you're interacting with the software. As students get older, we want to introduce them to software like Microsoft Office that they're going to be needing to write reports with and creating PowerPoint presentations and learning about Excel. And those applications are only available on a laptop, other than the, the Windows has a tablet where you could do that as well. But once again, the applications were very much limited for those. So that's really the way, the lens that I looked through, is what kind of software and what kind of work we wanted our students to do with those devices. And that really said, what grade are we going to draw the line and say we're going to shift from a tablet to a notebook? And second grade is, is probably one of the best grades to start introducing keyboarding concepts. So that was a, a natural place to start with the laptops there. It's kind of our thought process in this.
Okay, so on the, thank you, that, that really helped me. Because, you know, when you're talking about the almighty dollar.
That's right.
That, you know, you think about the tablets, and would, would the tablets now be the solution? So I think that you really have backed up the reason for the laptops.
Right. With Google Chrome, and that's another one that we looked at as well, I would say 75% of our current software would not run on that machine. Because it's a great internet machine. It's a great machine for doing research and for, you know, any of the kind of things that we do on the internet. But if we want to install software, then that's where that, that particular device would break down for us. So that's one thing. And another thing is when we looked at these devices, they have minimum devices that will work for Park, and then they have recommended. And we really wanted to make sure that we were set for the future, and we went with the recommended devices at this time. Because if we're making this kind of investment, we're going to have them for several years, and we want to make sure that we have the device that can take us forward and move us the way we need to go.
So when it's set up in the classroom, will it be that there'll be two-to-one in the classroom, or will it be that you have a cart that you share with your neighboring classroom?
You know, every teacher will have their own cart with their devices in that cart, be it tablet or laptop. So if I have 20 students in my classroom, I would have 10 laptops in my classroom, and then my neighboring teacher would have 10 in their classroom. And then they would make a decision to put them together, you know, and they're already talking about how they could do that. So they see that as a good solution. So it won't be a cart that rolls, it'll be a secure cart and, and it'll lock. So I think they'll be more secure for us than in a mobile cart where they're having to move them down to the end of the hall. Also, I think if you have the computers in your classroom every day, you're going to be more likely to reach and grab one than if you're having to go down the hall and get one from somewhere.
I'm sorry, how do you share that? How do you share? Do you just go over and pull all of the?
Say, I would probably send my students over and bring them back over, and you've got a set of, a full-class set of computers. You wouldn't bring the cart, you would just bring the laptop.
Okay.
So the carts would, or the cases would stay in the classrooms.
Are rolling carts more expensive than stationary carts?
A little bit more, yes.
Probably a little bit more.
They're a little more expensive, yes.
Dan, do you want to address?
And those carts will hold, what, 20 computers?
Correct. The carts will hold 20.
And they'll hold either tablets or laptops.
A rolling cart becomes a security risk because they are movable. If it's mounted to the wall and secured in the classroom, it's lockable in the classroom, you provide a more secure storage facility for our assets.
Well, certainly, we would notice if someone rolled a laptop cart out of the building, but.
Yes, ma'am, you think.
Did that take care of your questions, Ms. Smith?
Thank you.
Mrs. Renee.
Well, I too have several questions, sorry. In this interim period where the teachers, and my questions, I guess, are for Dan. In the interim period where the teachers will also have their Apple and be converting to the PC, to the Dell, whatever, will there be any kind of, and this would include the iPads also, I guess, will there be any kind of support for that, for those Apples this year? Like in the event that something broke down, will there be any support left this last year?
Yes, ma'am. We'll continue to maintain them up to MCS standards, both units. Yes, ma'am.
And then what about then in the future with iPads? Is there some kind of support for them?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, good. On the infrastructure, that's a very large number, almost 1.7 million. Does this, can you explain what infrastructure is? Is that the wiring, or does that include the storage? Because twice we have budgeted extra amounts for more storage on our facilities at this point in time. So that's my question there.
It includes both of those. It does not include the actual wiring. It will be wireless access points, which will allow our teachers and students access to internet. If you add more machines, you've got to add more infrastructure to support it. You can think of it as like the heartbeat of the body. The body's not going to work without it. You can have bigger arms, bigger legs, but if you don't have the heart to support it, it's not going to work. Same, same setup. The, we're going to build the infrastructure up, which is going to be the switches, which is going to carry the data from those wireless access points in those classrooms out to the internet or wherever for the park testing. That's what the infrastructure basically is. I know it's a large number, but you've got to take all the locations. We're taking every location. We're rebuilding them basically from the ground up again, all the switches and everything. It also includes storage. Because with this additional devices and things, we're going to have additional storage in it. It's got some additional storage in it. Yes, ma'am.
And this will be in each building? They'll have their own hub or whatever you call it in each building? Or is it centrally located at the central office?
We'll actually put the storage at the central office, yes, ma'am. The actual wireless access points and the switches will be at each location. We're going to redo each location.
Okay. Another question I have, is there any way that the system or security can be compromised in the event that we, I know we won't have that many, but we've got 5,700 students, 5,700, not that many families, but a large number of families that can log in then into our system? Will that compromise in any way?
They can only get to that particular server when they log in, ma'am. They're not logging in actually to the network, they're not logging into multiple, they're logging into that one.
Into one thing?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So they're really not allowing complete and full access, they're allowing access to that one location.
And that's not a threat to anything else?
I can never tell you that we're not trying to prevent all threats, but no, ma'am, I can't, I mean, yes, ma'am, they're only allowed to that one location. It's like you have 10 doors, you're allowed in door A.
Okay. And my other comment is, thanks for all that you've done, and I'm, I'm really glad to see if this is the way the board goes, that we're supporting Dell since they're so close to our own community.
Thank you.
I think that's a good move.
Mr. Campbell.
Any of these iPads or laptops, will they ever be permitted for the students to take them home? That you foresee right now, I'll say.
Right now, I do not foresee that these would be taken home. That may be something we can look at in the future. But I think that we've, in order for, for the machines to stay, to stay secure and for what needs to be on the machines to be appropriate, I would, I would much prefer that this, that they stay at school.
Mr. Barrett.
So if this is approved and we go forward, how long would it take to install the infrastructure once we, oh yeah, there you go.
Depends on how many times I call him involved.
There again, it's a, it's an ongoing process. I had drew an original timeline around 18 days to rebuild the entire infrastructure. During that, I was just going to build the infrastructure and then work on the laptops. We're going to be doing it all together, so that's going to significantly lower that timeline. I, I'll be glad to do whatever is necessary to try to get it done, but I can't tell you exactly how long. So we're going to try to do it while school's going on. I can't interrupt it, I can't interrupt their instruction, I can't interrupt the school day. I got to try to rebuild it with, you know, whatever tools we're going to have necessary or need.
Mrs. Phillips.
Um, I would hate for the kids at Discovery to lose a privilege that their parents assign and pay for, and that they've always signed, at least that was our experience when we were there. They were able to take their computers home with signed permissions from their parents and insurance and fees paid and all this stuff to do assignments at home. I would hate for them to lose that ability.
I understand that is something that I'll be discussing with Dr. Clark.
Okay.
If there are no more comments or questions, we will entertain a motion for the approval of the technology proposal for Dr. Gilbert to move forward.
I move that we accept this Dell proposal and move forward with this as presented.
Thank you. There's a motion in a second. Ms. Ridley, call the role.
Barrett?
Yes.
Dr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Renee?
Aye.
Ms. Nea?
Aye.
Ms. Wade?
Yes. Approval of budget amendment for year 2014.
And before you do that, I'm always, Gary's always accusing me of interrupting him, so I'm going to interrupt him again. I want to thank this board. I realize the step that you just took, but I want you to know how exciting this is for our school district. I think that when we look at what this is going to do for our children and for our teachers, it's going to be amazing. So thank you so much for your support of this.
Mr. Anderson.
Thank you. Board, one of the things that we have to do in our budget is what's called maintenance of effort. And what that, what that is about is that local dollars do not drop below what local dollars were budgeted at last year. And it's based on budget numbers. It's not based on real world and what's actually received, it's based on the budget numbers. In the, when we submitted our budget, which was due on August 1st, we submitted it, and we had reduced, if you remember, we had reduced our property taxes significantly, but our sales tax had increased significantly. The difference of last year's budget versus this year's budget was 40, a little over $42,000. Even though the amount of money we collected was greater than, they don't care. They care about budget to budget. So they said to us, they said, well, you, you need to get the board to approve an increase of $42,000, and they had recommended that we do it in the business tax line since we collected more money in that particular line. So we concur with them on that, that is fine. We had budgeted $235,000 in that line, and we're going to actually collect like 200, almost 280,000. So we'll be, we'll be good to do it there. So this is an increase in your revenue side, there's no additional expenses added to this, but to get our budget through these state requirements, we do need to increase our revenue line by $42,000. This has been the recommendation of the state, as I said, and we concur with it, and we put in your board packet the information on where it is, and it's on page, it's actually page 11 of your board packet or page 6 of the budget document. You can see where we had reduced our property tax collection by 525,000. We increased pickup taxes 1,000. We increased the local sales tax 482,000. And now, we're also having to increase 42,000 in the business tax, and that will get us over by $37 to satisfy the state's requirements. So we're asking you to, to please approve our, us to increase the revenue side of our operating budget for this next year by the $42,000, as is pointed out in the, in the information I've forwarded to you.
Are there any questions for Mr. Anderson before we entertain a motion for the approval of this budget item? And since there are not, is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
There's a motion in a second for the approval of the budget amendment for year 2014. All in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Are there any that oppose? Thank you.
Thank you.
We're down now to number six, approval of position title Coordinator of Nutrition, Education, and Training. Yes, ma'am.
I may be overlooking it, but I can't seem to find the job description for the Supervisor of Child Nutrition. So, I'm trying to make sure I have all my papers before we discuss this. I have the, the Cafeteria Manager and the Bookkeeper, but...
Nutrition Education?
No, the Supervisor of Child Nutrition, that position.
The Coordinator of Nutrition, Education, and Training?
No, the Supervisor. I don't, I don't have it, or I am rude.
I'm sorry, I forgot to give it to you. I got it confused with the Cafeteria Manager.
Ah, okay. Well, I would, I would be able to discuss this with more intelligence if I had that, that description today. Because without that description, it makes it very difficult to discuss the new position because I don't know what the position directly under that would entail and cover.
Can I add this to the packet? I just made copies of the menus for this month. I thought the board would be very interested in seeing that.
I know.
Can I make one little comment?
Uh, Mr. Campbell?
Oh, I'm, I'm looking, Ralph, I guess, on the Coordinator of Nutrition, Education, and Training?
Yes, sir.
Section, okay. Paragraph two, line number three, at the end, in that role, he will travel. Shouldn't that be he or she? Unless you're designated, this is going to be a man to do this. I don't want to get anybody in trouble because we're discriminating.
Correct. You are correct.
Is that right? You see where I am?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell.
I just don't feel like I can discuss it with intelligence without a very clear job description for the Supervisor of Child Nutrition.
Okay.
Are you wanting to entertain a motion to remove this?
I would.
And put it off until our next?
Till our next meeting, if possible.
Dr. Gilbert is, does that put any hampering on what you need to do?
No, I'm, I'm fine with that.
If there are any other questions that the board won't entertain on this particular line that we're getting, that we were going to discuss, but now, there is a motion to move this to our board meeting, I think it's the 27th?
Just two weeks.
Twenty, 27th, so we can get all the information and be able to read over it prior to the meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. Brown?
Just a quick question.
Yeah?
Is this not the description that's on our laptop?
No, that's Coordinator, the new proposed position.
The new position is there, there had been a request that we provide the, the job descriptions and salaries of all those associated with nutrition department. So, you do have the, you do have the position that is currently under discussion there.
Okay. Are there any other questions? If not, all in favor of moving this to our August 27th meeting, say aye?
Aye.
Are there any that oppose moving this? Okay. And Mr. Ringstaff, if you'll get that information out to the board?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Baker?
Hey, you have some, the board policies before you tonight for discussion. The first policy is Board Policy FM14, Energy Management and Conservation, and I will defer to Mr. Anderson to discuss that policy.
Thank you. The, this, this policy you approved in September of last year, and in line five, you'll see a slight change in that. This was a recommendation by the Energy Efficiency Schools Initiative because what they found was there were some school districts that were overzealous on saving energy dollars and not worrying about the classroom learning environment. So, they asked everyone to update their policy to include the sentence, "Maintenance of the learning environment shall always take precedence over energy conservation measures." That was kind of like a safeguard they asked us to put in. And then, starting on line 19, they've asked districts who have received the, the recent grants that we received, that we put in that we're going to be following and continuing to follow the ASHRAY and its American Society of Heating, Refrigeration, Air Conditioning Engineers standards. I had to look that one up, by the way. Standards to make sure that we continue to strive for that, and our new school, of course, will be, will be hitting that, and all of our older schools, as we continue to make upgrades, we will be going for those standards. So, these are just basically housekeeping things that they asked us to have boards redo in their policies to fit the new Energy Initiative standards and the future grants that they're going to be making available to us.
Any questions for Mr., Dr. Brown?
When these policies are electronically stored, are those standards put as an addendum to the policy, just in case we wanted to look at those at some point?
Actually, I, I can get those standards. I, you know, I have access to them. I can get them. We can put them into an administrative directive. I, I think, Kelly, would that not be appropriate to have that? We have our administrative directive on our energy conservation program. I can make it a part of that. That's a good idea.
Any other questions for Mr. Anderson? If not, we'll entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next two policies that you have listed are Board Policy IS-7 regarding selection of instructional material other than textbooks, and IS-8, special interest materials. Those were not in your packet. There are a few more changes that I'd like to make to those before we bring them to you. So, I will bring those revised policies to you at the August 27th meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Baker.
Okay, the next policy that you have is Board Policy IS-17, Relations with Education, Research, and Services Center, Centers. This policy, there is one additional paragraph that is not in the one that was in your packet that I would like to add to IS-17. It's a paragraph that would reflect that the research project shall comply with the relevant provisions of the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, including but not limited to Section 34 CFR, Section 99.31 A6. And that's the portion of the FERPA law that deals with research projects that look at student records.
Mrs. Smith?
Maybe I'm not reading this very well, but are these people that are going into schools and doing research?
Yes.
So, are they getting background checks?
Most of these, a lot of these are going to be doing research, but not directly at the school. They may be looking at documents. They may be observing. The folks that would go into our schools, though regardless of who they are, would have to follow the same policies as all other volunteers. And so, you would have to have, if they're going to be directly one-on-one with students, then you would have those background checks. So, they would, they would have to follow, if they're in our schools, they're going to have to follow the same, the same rules that the rest of, any visitor would have to follow, yes.
Okay.
And when you are, when you're working with, and correct me, Kelly, if I'm wrong, when we're working one-on-one with students, if it's, for example, if there's a survey that is going to be administered, or if there's work that's going to be done with the students, then there has to be, and it's not informed consent. There has to be agreement by the parents that those children can be involved with the research.
Right. I think that, that is in there, I think.
Okay.
I'm just surprised that they're really going through background checks, but I'm glad to hear that.
Now, anybody that comes into the school and is, as Dr. Gilbert said, working one-on-one with a child, they have to have gone through a background check. And a lot of times, the, for example, MTSU students that come in to teach in our school system, MTSU does background checks for those individuals. A lot of the companies or institutions these people are associated with have already done a background check on the individual, and they, they, they will relay that information to us that they have passed a background check that complies with state law.
Thank you.
Mr. Campbell?
You had, you said you had a paragraph to add to this policy?
Yes, it's not on the document you have before you. It's a paragraph, it'll be added as number eight, and it will just basically say that the research project will comply with FERPA.
Okay. Do we, do we need to wait till we get all of the policy before we approve, or what?
No, because this will come to you in second reading, and I'll have that additional change in it.
Is there a motion to approve first reading?
So moved.
There's a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye?
Aha.
Are there any that oppose? Thank you.
Okay, the next policy you have before you, you have policies that I gave you tonight regarding student records and the FERPA notices. The only changes that will need to be made to the records, STU 13, 14, 15, and 16, are there's just been some changes, changes to the language regarding the notice of rights and notice for directory information that the United States Department of Education has issued. This revised language has actually been included in our Student Parent Handbook, and the policies will be revised to include this, the revised recommended federal language. And those are the ones I handed out to you. And also, I gave you one that deals with notice for directory information, one that deals with notice of rights under FERPA, and then the third document deals with notice of rights under the Protection of Pupil Rights Amendment Act, and that will also be added to the actual policies.
Okay. Now, this goes through 13, 14, 15, and 16, correct?
Yes, and I will bring those revised revisions to you at the next board meeting.
Are there any questions for Mrs. Baker before we go on?
That was going to be my question. These are the three separate policies.
Okay, Ms. Baker, we're ready for STU 25?
Okay, then the next policy is Board Policy STU 25, Suspension, Expulsion, and Remand. That policy, you'll see there, the only change that has been made to that is to include that assault of a school bus driver or other school personnel is also a basis for suspension. Prior to that, the policy had just included principal and teacher.
Are there any questions for Mrs. Baker? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion for first reading?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, and the last policy that you have before you is yet another policy mandated by the federal government. It, it deals with Section 504 Complaints and Grievance Procedure. The, if you're not familiar with the law that's often referred to as Section 504, I'm sure many of you've heard of the Americans with Disabilities Act. Section 504 is very similar to the Americans with Disabilities Act. Any educational entity that receives federal funding must comply with Section 504 and make their programs available and provide reasonable accommodations for individuals with disabilities in order to participate in those programs. And the state of Tennessee actually has been the subject of a consent decree ordered by the Tennessee Department of Education's Office of Civil Rights. And in that consent decree, the federal government wanted all districts in the state of Tennessee to adopt this particular grievance procedure that is set forth in the policy that I provided to you tonight. So, that is why you have this policy before you. It's a federally mandated procedure that we must follow.
Are there any questions for Ms. Baker?
Repeat, please, for me, Ms. Baker. Who wanted us to adopt it?
The United States Department of Education. They have a division called the Office of Civil Rights that ensures that all local education agencies comply with all federal laws regarding individuals' rights. And apparently, there was an issue that not all school districts in Tennessee were following the 504 procedures that were recommended by the federal government, and they issued a, what's called a consent decree. It's an order that a federal agency can issue requiring that school districts adopt certain procedures. And these are the procedures that each school district is supposed to adopt. We had received, and this went out, the email that I received went out to all, all school districts across the state, and it was from the senior attorney in the U.S. Department of Education notifying the school districts that they needed to come into compliance and adopt this complaint procedure that had been revised by the federal government. The revision to the complaint procedure is that individuals may make oral complaints in addition to written complaints.
Okay.
Mr. Barrett?
Who is the Section 504 coordinator? Is that the Department of Education?
Deborah Savely is our Section 504 coordinator for the, for our district. Then there is someone in the Tennessee Department of Education that assists and handles any complaints that would come to the state. And that individual as well had issued a policy manual that every district is to follow regarding 504s, and that will be referenced in our administrative directives and has been for years, but it was updated by the state in reaction to this consent decree.
Is there a motion for the approval?
So moved.
First reading. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And the last policy that you have before you is the deletion of Board Policy IS-22 regarding an adopted school program. Schools, I'll, or I could let Dr. Gilbert explain the reason to delete that. I know that there are so many methods that schools are obtaining, obtaining contributions from different organizations within the community that this adopted school program, this policy is a little outdated. And we did adopt a community involvement policy a few months ago that, that reflected the ability for schools to work in conjunction with community organizations that might provide support to the schools.
And I think, I think she said it well, so I'll leave it at that.
Make a motion, we delete IS-22.
I second deletion.
There's a motion and a second to delete this IS-22. All in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving along, list of your 2013, 2014 new hires. If there are any questions, you'll pose those to Dr. Gilbert or Mr. Ringstaff.
Some great people on this list.
List of hires, so if you have any questions. Discussion of Employee Suggestion Program. What? Was that a?
I think that came, I think that was Mr. Barrett's.
Okay, if you'll give us a little insight into that.
Well, I was, I was just, it's on the second page?
Second page of your?
Of the agenda. The one that was on the school board website.
Discussion of Employee, of an Employee Suggestion Program.
Why are we not getting all this stuff on the laptop?
On the laptop.
Anyway, I just thought we would, it would be a good idea maybe to think about having an employee suggestion program similar to what, I know the state has one, I know Rutherford County has one, where it allows employees to, if they see something that could be changed and it could allow us to save some money as a district, that we could either compensate them or acknowledge them for, you know, recognizing that kind of savings. And that was my idea, and it was just an idea, you know, we can talk about it, or we can move on, but I thought it'd be something we could at least discuss.
Mrs. Rainier?
I don't think we could compensate anybody for an idea. We don't have money to do that, correct?
No.
Just pat on the back. Are you saying ideas as far as, I don't know what you mean by?
Like saving money, like if they see, for example, if they see like, there's multiple things that we're charging for, and we could cut some of that and save some money, like a service, if we have two different services, and then they could, they could cut one of those services, and then we could save some money, but...
I guess that in my mind, if I saw an employee suggestion box, it might turn into a grape box, you know, this is wrong, that's wrong, we need to do this, we can't do that. Maybe a different name somehow?
It could be, yeah.
I don't know.
And?
Would you have to put one in every school? And let somebody go by?
Equal opportunity.
Let somebody go by and collect the suggestions?
I would think if the board wants to move forward with this, what I would suggest is probably putting this probably in the shared hands of Gary Anderson and Lisa Trail. Lisa, already, we're doing a kudos program, and I Lisa, already we're doing a kudos program, and I think that certainly there would be some background as far as how that, the operation would run, as far as whether the suggestions are viable. I think you would have to get your Ashra, whatever, whatever the, but I think you would certainly be able to look at that and determine that.
Mrs. Smith?
I think we should, I mean, I think it's great. We should have some vehicle, I mean, I hope that people that work for Rutherford City Schools feel like they can email any of us and make suggestions, but if we have a box, then that'd be great. I mean, any way to make it happen and to save some money, I mean, Gary comes up with great ideas, and you did, you did, great ideas, but maybe there's some people out there that, you know, are, have a secret hobby that we don't know about that could save us some money.
I was wondering if you'd say the people out there to have greater ideas.
Well, I mean, there could be some fabulous ideas that our teachers have, I know they're fabulous ideas that our teachers have, so let's get them, but, you know, put them in the teacher's lounge, but we gotta make sure that they don't sit there for five months.
Where would it go to?
I think, I think, what, Lisa has a box, a kudos box in each school, and I think that, I would see this operating very similarly, that because she picks it up on a regular basis, or once a month, okay, so I would see that this is something that you would have the same ability, and I would encourage, I would add on that, and say that Mr. Anderson probably could come up with some ideas for contests or?
I'm thinking an extra cookie.
We're spending $5 million on technology, why are we doing a box? Let's do it through technology.
Okay.
I think the accent, I think, the reason not technol, the reason I was thinking is, of course, technology, have techno, I mean, have technology, but sometimes you just kind of want to write it out, is what I'm thinking.
Yes, but it's just as easy to submit that electronically as it is to write it out and drop it in a box.
A virtual box?
Location, location, whatever.
But if you.
They got their laptop.
But if you do it that way, isn't there a name on it?
That's true.
If I send you an email?
But if we're making a suggestion for an improvement, why would we not want our name associated?
Well, that's true too.
Ms. Phillips?
I just, I appreciate Mr. Barrett bringing the idea to us, ever how it might be implemented. I wish so much that we could, if we did have a mammoth savings of money in some way that Mr. Anderson has miraculously overlooked somehow, I mean, I wish we could reward the person, but we really can't because, of course, this is taxpayer money. We operate on taxpayer money, unlike a private business or a corporation who have more discretion. We have to be very careful with our money, so we would have to acknowledge and reward them in a different way. I just can't imagine anyone being able to find something that Mr. Anderson has missed, but if there is, you know, hats off to them, you know, awesome. So, sure, why not?
I think it's a grand idea.
Good idea.
Mrs. Rainier?
I think that, I think it's a great idea also, but I think it needs to definitely be spelled out to the teacher so that it doesn't become something else if they can do it anonymously. We do still have professional advisory, correct? And that if a teacher has an issue with something or needs an explanation, it can be handled through professional advisory, so, so they know, sorry, so they know the difference between this one and that one.
I think that's an excellent point, Ms. Rainier.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't want.
Right. Well, I'm pretty sure, Ms. Trail, if you'll get with Mr. Barrett, he has, he has a great idea, and if you want to, maybe get Ms. Ridley to send an email out to the board and maybe get into a little more explanation of what we would like to see in that suggestion, employee suggestion program. I'm pretty sure that not just things to save money, but things to maybe help in the classroom or anywhere else may end up in there that's money-saving. But that sounds like a great idea, Mr. Barrett.
It comes to us, right? It comes to the board?
It should come back.
I would just go to like, I would love to see the ideas.
We would all like to see it, yeah.
Mr. Barrett, it would be a good idea if you would, since this is your suggestion, that you work with Mrs. Trail on getting this in. You can always get suggestions from the board on how to make it work. Thank you. Discussion of need for meeting with legislators. Someone want to elaborate? Mr. Barrett?
It was my idea too, I guess I'm on a roll here. With all the changes going on in education, especially at the state level, you know, we did this last year, and I thought it was a good thing, we were able to talk to our legislators, at least let them know how we felt. I wish they would put the brakes sometimes on a lot of this stuff and just let it kind of settle out for a while, but I think we need to do this again, I think there's going to be some more changes coming, and I'd like to get them on record to where they stand on some of these things, so, and I'd like to see us do it again with Rutherford County School Board, I think that was a good thing to do.
It was a very informative meeting. Mr. Campbell?
I would agree. I think it was good, even though I wasn't there, I did get to watch it, but I think we need to change the format. I think last year, what happened was, a question was asked, and each legislator took 10 to 15 minutes giving their viewpoint. And I kind of thought in the beginning, and I think some of them did too, that the idea was that we just kind of sat round table and just expressed and gave different views and ideas with each other, and for us to let them know our concerns, and them let us know their concerns, but I'm not real sure that Rutherford County thinks it's all that great of an idea to do before they go back in the session, I guess sometime in January, but I think the, but they may, they may be all in favor of it, but I kind of got the impression that they were not, but I think we need to do it.
Mrs. Phillips?
I'm just curious as to whether the legislators required that they would have some idea what the questions were before the meeting? Does anybody remember?
They wanted it beforehand.
They want, did they want the information beforehand? So I think that's perhaps what, what made it a more formalized setting instead of the dialogue that might have been able to happen, because they needed, I guess they felt like they needed time to know, to study and be able to respond.
Well, I think when you do that, and I don't care if they know the question, but I think when you do that, you make it a formal thing. They feel like every one of them have got to give their opinion and answer, and I'd like to see us just be able to sit down somewhere and just create ideas and throw ideas back and forth and nothing, you know, we're not, we're telling them what we'd like to see, and they can tell us what they'd like to see, but it doesn't have to be so formal.
Yeah, that would be good if they would be willing to.
I'm sure, I think they will, ones I've talked to will be more than willing.
We can always extend the invitation to them, and even to Rutherford County, give them the option of whether or not they want to be a part of it, and, and we set our own agenda, how we want to do it, and make them, you know, keep it comfortable, but also have in mind, it's okay to sit around and kind of throw them out, but have some kind of idea and try to stick to what we want answers to.
If I, if I could make one comment, I do think it would be beneficial, we may not be able to schedule it before January, but I think we need to remember that, that there's still some things on the table and things that are in, that actually are on the floor still, that can be brought up that first day, and I really think that it would probably be wise, if we can schedule it, to have it before they go back in session.
Would you like me to do that, being I'm that?
You're a legislator person.
We don't want to take your job.
I think I'm going to have plenty of time here coming up.
No, Mr. Campbell, that'd be a great idea, Mr. Barrett's got the suggestion program, and you'll deal with our legislators.
May I ask?
Yes, ma'am.
Mrs. Baker, with that, if we all met together, is that part of the Sunshine Law, and would it be televised, or can we do it without?
It just has to be an advertised open meeting where the agenda is advertised as well, because it would fall in that special meeting category.
Right, I'm wondering if the dialogue would be more open if it were not televised?
Could be.
I don't know.
It could be, we could very easily do it at the, the large media room, media room at the central office would be good, because we did, the county did serve a really nice meal before the meeting in their honor, so that was nice. Well, Mr. Campbell is in charge of that, so any suggestions?
Suggestion, we host it this time.
Yes.
And I like your idea of making it informal, that was, it was a little strained, and I would, I'd like to really have some good input and back and forth, you know, that it's comfortable rather than over microphone.
It came across that way on the TV as well, to be honest with you.
Discussion of possible policy committee. Anyone want to elaborate on the?
Well, I brought that up at one time, but I didn't know we were going to talk about it tonight, because it wasn't on my agenda.
There's the stuff.
But it's not on my laptop agenda.
Well, you want to just give us a little bit, we can discuss it even at our next meeting, but give us an idea of what your proposal is.
Well, after I brought it up, I guess I'm going back to what Rutherford County has that I was involved with so long, because I was the principal representative on the policy committee. And they have a policy committee that goes over the policies and talks about the new ones and the old ones. I guess they're still doing that, are they, Joe? But all the board members are part of it, but they also have community people, they have a teacher or two, they have a couple of administrators. Now, whether or not we are that large as compared to them or not, I don't know. After I brought that up and kind of looked back and see how we were handling things, I thought we were doing a pretty good job of it.
Did a great job at it.
But I don't know whether we want to involve community members and things like that.
Aren't we community members?
Ma'am, I'm talking, yes ma'am, but I'm talking about people outside of the school board or the school system. Do they have parents that are on their policy committee? Somebody, somebody's got a relative, I think, on their policy committee, but I don't remember who. But they do have, that's what they have.
Mrs. Rainier?
Won't we have some input from community members and other stakeholders when we get into our, it's not Southern Association anymore, but in that regard, would that be sufficient?
Yeah.
You know, it's that, it's that time. I thought, when I saw this, I thought you meant have a few people discuss policy and get them up to date and bring them and get them to Ms. Baker so that we can snap along through them.
We're supposed to be doing that.
And we try really hard, but.
We're getting, we're getting there, I don't know how many we lack, but it was just something that I thought of, but I, like I said, after we met a couple of times, after I said that, I think we were pretty well handling those policies pretty well.
You're right.
Don't give there no more, any more comments or discussion on this? Our policies are open now to the general public to come to our meetings, or if they have any, they're welcome to send them in to any board member, or they can send an email in to Dr. Gilbert, or I think Ms. Trail, maybe somebody. Do they have anywhere on the internet where parents or the community can go in and, is something out there, yeah, I know it's something, it's there, so.
Lisa, would you come up to the microphone?
Please, ma'am.
I'm sorry. We have on the website a, an icon that says Ask MCS. We receive daily requests or comments from Ask MCS. That's directed to the appropriate person. So if it's a curriculum question, it goes to the curriculum department. If it's a busing question, it goes to the busing department. They always copy me, so I know that they have responded to the question or comment that's come forward. And it's been very, I would say nine out of 10 questions are either positive or just a question, like how do I do this with my child? Very, very few are negative comments.
Well, that's, maybe we need to talk a little bit more about that opportunity for the general public to add comments out there on maybe some policies that we've been discussing. Well, we're down to review of our draft for the agenda for August 27th. Is there anything on the agenda that you want added?
I would like to add a conversation and a report from the people who worked in our partnership with the, the school in China. That would be an appropriate time to do that.
Okay, just an update on what, what the?
Maybe a report from the teachers that were involved, not, I mean, if we, if that, if time would allow.
Oh, okay, that we're on the round, okay, I know what you're talking about.
Just some, so that, so that the board has an update about the partnership and about the activities.
Okay.
It's been reported in the newspaper, but, you know, not a lot of detail about it.
But that go under our communications? Dr. Gilbert, you want to put it somewhere else?
We can put it there, and I'll, I'll ask.
Allow them time.
Yeah.
I'd like to add something to communications. I would really like to hear the good news of the opening of Marshall City Schools for the public.
Okay.
Here, please, it's a good news.
Okay, sure.
Is there anything else the board can think of that you'd like to see on the agenda for our next meeting? Okay, hearing none, just a reminder that our board retreat is this weekend, Friday night at 5:00. Ms. Ridley, if you don't mind, if you'll just send a little reminder out to the board to remind us, we don't want to forget about the retreat. We're not going to forget, but just a little reminder, we need reminding sometimes. If it's nothing else, we will entertain, Dr. Gilbert, you have anything?
I'm good, thank you. No, I appreciate everything you've done tonight, thank you very much.
If there's nothing else, I'd like to thank the board for their time and attention to so many items that we've had on our policy work session. It's been a good meeting, good discussion, and I'm certainly appreciative. And we will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
Adjourn.